Okay, welcome to our meeting. First order of business, we have a present presentation, a proclamation. This is for Lauren.
Duranal.
Duranal. How do I pronounce it?
Duranal.
Duranal, there we go. I thought so. Two different versions of that today. Okay, you want to come up here and I'll read this to you. Where is the Rousas Point 4th of July Committee, as in the past, asked the elementary classes of NCCS Rousas Point Elementary School to create a picture depicting the July 4th celebration? Where is the elementary classes of the NCCS Rousas Point Elementary School participated by submitting pictures to be used for this event? And where is Lauren, 5th grader, at the NCCS Rousas Point Elementary School submitted a picture which was chosen by the Rousas Point 4th of July Committee as the winning entry? And therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rousas Point would like to thank Lauren for her efforts in creating this picture? And further be it resolved that the Mayor will present this proclamation honoring your outstanding event. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, the clerk.
Let her hold the picture.
Okay, hold the two pictures now. Okay? Okay, now, the clerk is going to deliver this to the school tomorrow for you, okay? Now, you've got to get used to doing this because I've got a feeling you're going to be doing this a lot in the future. So, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay, but if you don't want to, you can put it up again so you can sort of see through all the business stuff if you don't want to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, first order, well, second order of business is minutes of the meeting of June 4th. Are there any additions or corrections? Tom?
There are none.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Bills. Our son, are there any conditions or?
No, we've not.
Any comment on the board on these questions?
Make a motion to accept the bills as written.
Second. Motion is second, approve the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondents?
We have one thing this evening. Dear Mr. Mayor, last Sunday, the 10th, I went through your town in my motorcycle on my return trip home in Genoa, New York from Vermont. Halfway to Genoa, I found with dismay that I had lost my wallet containing about $200 with my credit cards and driver's license. Today, I received a USP parcel sent by an anonymous citizen from Rousas Point containing the lost wallet and its untouched contents. I unfortunately cannot thank my benefactor directly, not only for the return of the wallet, but also for letting me know with this act that there are still many good people out there. It's a good feeling to have. I am thanking you instead. Yours sincerely, Raul Arisabar from Genoa.
From Genoa or Genoa?
Genoa.
Okay, well, that's nice. Every once in a while, we can say how nice Rousas Point is, right? Share that with you. Okay. The first thing I have is we've been notified that our recreation center manager has passed the civil service test for that position. She was hired, interviewed and hired provisionally for that, the provision being that she passed the test. She's passed the test. So, I would like to appoint her for permanent, full-time, three-month probationary period. Make a motion from the board.
I make a motion that we approve that?
Second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. Peters, do you notify her of this? She had a letter for this.
Will it?
Okay. Now, authorization to sign a NYMER contract. Now, I'll go over this a little bit with you. This is our other insurance policy for everything in the village. It used to call it a steam boiler policy, and maybe it still is, I don't know, but this covers all the buildings, the liability, everything, except vehicles, I think. Liability on the vehicles, but not the vehicles, just the liability. The fire department is not in here at all. They're in a separate insurance policy. I checked to make sure they're covered with liability and everything for them. Now, I went through it kind of just briefly, and I saw that they had a bunch of things in there that were listed to insure that I questioned why we would want to insure. I'll give you an example. The building that has the filters in it behind the water plant that we built for $185,000 and never worked one minute, they have insured for $448,000. I said, first place, what could go wrong with it? Secondly, we're going to tear it down anyway because it's been disconnected for 20 years since it was built, never been used. There was a few other buildings like that, like they have the stabilization beds at the wastewater treatment plant, which are no longer used anymore, over a million dollars. And that's just an empty, uninsulated, uneated building, but maybe it's heated, I don't know, but I think the heat's been disconnected. So, I asked, I had the administrator check in with them, and he found out that by taking out some of these things that are just clearly not insurable property, that we could save a few thousand dollars. So, that's what we did. Other than that, everything's, you know, every major building is covered. There's even some stuff that you could question, like those dugouts out there are covered. There isn't $4,000 a piece or $1,400 a piece. What?
$3,800.
$3,800 a piece. You know what they're made of.
Yeah.
You know?
Carport.
I'm thinking the only thing that could happen to them is if somebody, you know, some kid drove a car across here, ran into one, and then presumably their insurance would pay for it, but those are still in there.
Something on fire.
Yeah. But we could find two of them anyway.
But you didn't let it violate them or something.
Yeah. But, anyway, so that's what we did with that. So, we, let's see, that one, so I guess I didn't really have to, but I don't believe in doing business that way. I'd like to get authorization to sign the insurance contract for the village. Make a motion, second, for that.
Make a motion.
Okay, motions from Trustee LeBlanc, second from Trustee Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, if anybody would like to look at this, does anybody want to see this? It's 36 pages, but I can have, Steve can email it to your house, or do you have copies of it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, there you go. No, I don't know it. Which one you got? You got the cable one or the other one? Okay. Okay, good, so you all got it, fine. Okay. Next thing is we have the cable franchise agreement, the charter communications. I talked to the man, the representative, about three weeks ago on this, and they tried to put a few things in there that, well, I won't comment about them, but they tried to slip a couple of things in, and we changed them. One of the things is, and the administrator caught this one, was the gross revenue. We get a percentage of the gross revenue, but they weren't including some of the gross revenues that they were getting wasn't counted towards this. Right, Steve?
That's correct.
So, we made them all the gross revenues that they get from the village, and this is not going to affect anybody's rates or anything, it's just money that they were skimming off on us. We moved them up on some of their, like, they wanted to make it a 15-year contract, and I really wanted a five-year contract, but we settled on a 10-year, which is what they had before. I just think it gives us more leverage if we have less time between contracts. And, I don't know, was there, what was the other changes that we had to make? Steve, do you remember off the top of your head?
The duration for having access to open trenches.
Open trenches, so they wanted 15 days, and what did we settle on? Five?
They wanted 30, we settled on 15. We sought five.
Okay. But, you know, we're doing all the digging to put the trenching in, and then they wanted us to just say, well, leave it open for 45 days or something. Anyway, so, I need a motion to have the clerk publish a notice of a public hearing on this for July 2nd. So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's the public hearing. We've been doing really well. I think I'll, I have some more comments and stuff, but I'll see if it gets covered later in the meeting here. Trustee Arnold.
All right. On June 15th, myself and Mr. Peters went to the opening of the bike trail from Rousas Point Champlain, and it was about 30, 35 people there, and a lot of dignitaries and stuff, and it was, it was a pretty well-put-on thing. And we had the ribbon cutting, and I cut a piece of the ribbon, and I also got a brochure, if somebody wants a brochure or whatever. I only got three of them, so, but anyhow, it was very nice. It was very well put together and stuff, so, it was good. Okay, and on the other hand?
Well, thank you for going for behalf of the village. I appreciate that.
No problem. Policy on the water plant. Want to discuss that now?
Yeah, we can, a little bit. This is pertaining to our plan to go to eliminate the midnight shift very soon, and what happens if an alarm goes off or something on the midnight shift? Who gets called in or whatever? And the chief operator has given us a proposal here that he thinks will work.
Right.
Did you talk to him about it or?
No, no, I didn't, no.
Okay.
I think Tom did. Did you, Tom?
I haven't heard anything about it.
Oh, okay. Mr. Peters?
Yes, we don't stand.
Yes, I think that right now, what I don't yet see is the actual operations plan, like how it might work, but the overarching concern is how do we ensure that a water plant operator is available either in town or, you know, awake, you know, so they need to be on call in some way, and then we're requiring somebody to alter their life after hours. At some point, there has to be a level of compensation to, well, to some level. So, that's the concern, and that's the point of discussion of how we're going to do that. So, you know, that's, that's probably something to kind of work through, obviously with Brian, the Bryans, and I would figure out, you know, what's going to be fair and effective for the water filter plant.
I would point out, too, that they're not the only department that's subject to call out.
Correct.
In fact, they're the only department that wasn't subject to call out because they always had 24-hour coverage.
Right.
But like the Department of Public Works, they all had call-out policies if something would.
So, after the midnight shift, this one, who is going to be the operator to call out the fall itself?
The Public Works Supervisor's taking care of that.
Oh, okay.
Or we'll make sure that somebody else does. So, are they looking for overtime for this, or?
At some level, there's a few different ways to do it. If somebody's on call, then they're available either at a kind of a per diem rate, there's sometimes an overtime rate, or something that, you know, more or less compensates the individual for being available. So, there's, there's also with Taylor laws, some considerations we have to make as well.
Now, that would, would that be on a rotating shift?
Yes, that's what Brian's proposed.
Right, so that they don't, not only one person gets it?
Correct.
Okay, that's all right. And they have the minimum call-outs in the union contract, like, will they get two hours or something for a call-out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Trustee Dart.
I just wanted to add a comment, too, that I just feel that we really ought to study the issue of the compensation because it's going to affect more than this one department. And we're not going to say to the plow guys that stay home every winter storm because they know they're going to get called out, there's some kind of compensation for them, too. It's not fair to any other department unless they all get it.
And you're very right, because we're also going to be establishing new ground here with the union contract and everything, so we have to be careful how it's done because it's set a precedent.
I just got one item. There's no reflection on anything we talked about tonight. I came up with this one a week and a half ago. Effective immediately, I'm resigning as Chair of the Recreation Department. I feel I'm unable to fulfill my duties of my chair as my ideals are not in line with current administration. I believe this decision is in the best interest of all parties. Good hearing, it's Tom Dart. Thank you. I'll give this as a record to the board.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm all set, thank you.
Trustee Manaric.
I have nothing for the team.
Okay. Trustee Juan.
We've got a couple of items. One is on the, it's just a request from the Fire Department to dispose of unserviceable old holes, and they'd like to donate it to the state local Fire Department. I did talk to the Fire Chief today. He was supposed to get me a written request I have not received at the time of the day, so I don't know if he wanted this.
Well, if you know all the particulars, put in the formal motion that the Village of Rousas Point will authorize the transfer of whatever it is to whoever it's going to.
Going to the Albert Fire Department, you know, like Peter?
No, I haven't, no. Five-inch holes, right? Five-inch holes, but I don't know how much. I don't know if it's a thousand feet or 15,000 feet or what, I don't know.
They just want to give, you know, disposal that somebody else can get some use out of it if they can, so. We don't, I will get the written request.
I don't know if it's a canvas hole that we have. No, it's a five-inch, I think it's a yellow five-inch hole, because I know they got new a couple of years ago for that. Yeah, we got red.
I think, yeah.
Is it? I don't know, but it's.
So, I make a motion, we just dispose of the Fire Department, dispose of the holes to the Albert Fire Department at no cost upon the, we'll have a documentation later placed for the Fire Chief to request that.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Peters has, is collecting, has collected all the ideas for the CFA grant applications for this year. I can put together a list of them, but I'm not going to get into them. It's just, Mr. Peters is looking for any feedback as he prepares the actual grant application, so you can feed your input directly to him. I thank everybody for soliciting, we've got some great ideas. There's no guarantee on grants, obviously, you're out of tips of funding, so, you know, put a best effort in and see what happens. But, see, Mr. Peters, if you want to give input to anything on the ideal list that you oversee.
Yeah, these things look pretty good to me on here, the different things that we've got.
We've got some great ideas, but, like I say, ideas are one thing, and we'll see where it goes. Anything to ask anybody, you want to?
Sure, yeah, the list that I've given you, you're welcome to either, you know, keep, make notes on, return to me. What I'm really looking for is kind of, it can be anonymous, put your name on it, but just, you know, priority, what's most important to you on that list, or if there's something that's missing, add it in, and then we can kind of converse either individually or through this format. The CFA process, the deadline is July 27th, which actually is, that's pretty tight. So, if we're taking, I mean, I could make an effort on all of those. We could pick maybe three or four that we know we can accomplish and work through. If we were lucky enough to receive an award, that's probably, probably the best path to follow, and then that gives us a better chance of having not only a good grant application, but also a good follow-through afterwards. So, certainly, I'm looking, you're, obviously, the elected leaders need to have your input. If you don't want to do any, that's also valuable input as well. So, just would like that type of conversation to happen fairly quickly, if you are able.
Do you want it by the next board meeting or sooner than that?
I think sooner than that.
Okay, sample all in by Friday?
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
The thing I particularly like about this list of proposals is almost all of them are, they're all legitimate, but they're like things that we really need in the village, as opposed to just looking for something to spend grant money on because it's out there, and, you know, stuff like, you know, water plant design and just different things that we, that we probably will have to get all of these done at some time or another, whether we can get funding for them, whether we have to pay for them out with our tax money, but they're all that type of, or for the most part, that type of projects that, you know, we're going to do it sooner than later, probably, so, it's a, it's a good list, I think.
Yeah, my final item, very good news, is my discussion of the five-year business plan. I have been working on that. I'm not quite ready to come to the board, so I'll be working with you, Mr. Mayor, a couple trustees in the next two weeks to refine that and get a more polished product for discussion. So, unfortunately, we'll have to probably shorten our meeting tonight.
I can fill it. We have one issue, okay, that's everybody here then? Board is done? You're done? Okay, we need to discuss about this sign in the front tonight. I don't know who it should have been under, but, Steve, you want to brief us on, this is for the, the letters on the front of the building we're replacing. The old ones were, the old ones said, Rousas Point Civic Center, and they were made out of cut-up plywood, I think, and they're 40 years old.
Mr. Sterling is the one that cut them out.
You did a good job, I mean, it lasted 40 years. You can't, you can't kick on that, but we're doing a major overhaul on this building, and we'll have a little more update on that in a few minutes, but you want to go over this?
Sure. Yeah, so, what I did was, as per my email to all of you, I took the liberty of just checking with some of our local or regional sign companies of what it might take to kind of replace, at least in size, those signs with, like, high-density plastic, something that's not going to fade, rot, rust, whatever, while we're upgrading the aesthetics of the building. I just wanted to see what it might cost, and so, I did ask for three quotes, I got two back, and the one that was most affordable was $3,800 installed for two-foot-high letters for Rousas Point Civic Center, and those would be professionally installed, you know, on the building. So, the company that gave us that quote is willing to come by with a sample, which I've asked them, and he said this week. So, soon as I get that time, I'll let all of you know that, you know, when that meeting is, so you can also see what that is. We may decide that we, we don't, you know, might just want to go back with the plywood, or we may want to go in this direction, but either way, that while we're doing the front of the building, I wanted to see what it was going to take. Something that's really important is that there is no line item for this, and as I mentioned in my email, I'm not really keen on just, you know, kind of trying to find the money to do something, but in this particular case, I just want to make sure that while we're dressing up the building and making it something that, once again, that looks like we're proud of it, because we are, I want to give that option, put that option out there and say, hey, this is what it is, what it costs, and wanted to see what all of you thought of doing something like that. So, that's where we're at right at the moment.
Trustee Manaric said that this same company just did the lettering on the front of the high school.
Yeah.
And I went up and looked at it this afternoon, and it really looks nice. Now, theirs is quite a bit smaller than ours, maybe, you think it's 16-inch, maybe?
Yeah.
I want to make sure that these are solid, not hollow plastic, because, and I, I'd like to know about what kind of material they use as far as, like, ozone deterioration, because you see plastic signs all over the place that are about 20 years old, they get brittle, and they get yellow, and I want to make sure that this is not that kind of material.
Right.
And you don't want them hollow, because somebody will throw a snowball at it, and it's frozen and break it. So, you know, we've got to make sure that it's, I mean, if it's like kid proof for the school, it's probably not for us.
It is a, it's a form. It's rounded, it's a rounded block.
And then is it filled in with, like, styrofoam or something behind it?
No.
Just hollow?
And then it's mounted to the, like I said, the steel frame.
I thought he said it was solid filled or backed or something, or?
He told me inch-and-a-half thick, but when I started looking online for the company that, the fabricator, they looked hollow to me, so we've got to get a sample.
It's definitely, I mean, if it's the same sign?
Yeah.
It's definitely, it's just a form. I mean, he'll tell you, he'll bring something down, he'll show you.
Well, I would say what we'll do is we'll look at it over the next week or so, and then we'll make a formal decision at next meeting. And what we'll do is we'll fund it through the Recreation Center, the project fund that we've established for this, and mainly, we bought paint out of it and some other stuff, but there's, there should be some money left in that, and then I'll add to it and do a board resolution to add the money into it when we decide how much we need. Okay, other reports. Our son?
Steve and I have been working on the new village website. We're close to launching it. We're still tweaking it some, but we feel that we're going to launch it because it's getting too hard to try and keep two websites going at once here, so.
But we shouldn't have to, you know, one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Pelkey?
Yes, sir. The water plant. They had some problems with the auto dialer. They're working the case out of that. The second skid unit, clearing skid unit that sets the tower is on manual, and we'll go to automatic because we don't have a signal from the meter. Unfortunately, the meter was, came out of Texas, where the tank came out of, and it's hard to get parts. So, we got a, we're waiting for our second quote to install a new meter. It's going to be a live-tap meter, where we're going to drill a hole inside of the pipe, put a new meter in to get that pulse, so that will run automatically, where an operator's not going to have to go up there and turn it up or down. It'll go with the flows.
That's good.
So, by the, by the end of this week, I'm planning to have all the information so we can get that part ordered, so we can get it installed. Rose Avenue, all the water taps are done. We have to dig up one valve tomorrow that's leaking, that's in the main valve on the four-inch. When we shut it off, it leaks. We figured the top of the bolts on the valve is rotted, and we have to lower the fire hydrant, but we're going to start cementing that road this week, and blacktop on the south side.
Excellent job.
The electric department's been helping down here with the painting. I mean, I think they're doing an excellent job. All the building's washed, and they're coming along pretty good. They're working with the rec center and a couple of the summertime people that I have working for us, so hopefully, this week, we'll see some real progress down here because we've got five days of nice weather coming, or four days of nice weather coming here after today.
Building looking?
I think they're doing an excellent job. I mean, it looks really nice. Lot of comments from the, from the public when you're driving by, or you're stopping, talking to the guys, and it really looks nice.
Do they take out a lot of the dents on the side of the building here?
John's going to start that tomorrow on the south side. He's going to start popping the dents while they finish painting on the north side.
There's a couple on the north side, too, on the bottom, not very big ones.
But we're going to try to get around this corner to where the really bad dents are, get this painted, and then we'll, John's going to work on fixing the tin that's ripped and patch it, and we're going to try to patch it the best we can and get it painted, at least the first coat. Then if we have to go back and add something, we can.
What I was going to suggest, I was thinking about this tonight, I think that when they start painting tomorrow, I know they wanted to paint the whole building one coat and then come back with a second coat. I think they should maybe start on this side here like we talked about, because this part right here has no damage to the tin, because there's no parking lot there, and that wraps around from the front, but then go right across the front and put a second coat on. The reason for that is because of the sign. You know, we got to, we want to put the sign up and then put the second coat up.
Okay.
So, and then, then continue on down the north side as far as they can go and as much as they can do, and then go around the back and leave the south side for the very end, because that has the most damage to repair.
What we're trying to do is we work with the sun in the morning, we can get the front done, and then in the afternoon, try to work down the north side. So, I'll pass that on to the Shields in the morning to see it, you know, let her know that.
Yeah, because it's hard to paint that.
Yeah, because it's hard to paint that when it's, when it's really warm out.
Yeah, when, when you have the red sunlight on it.
Pretty hot, the, the paint dries right out just as quick as you put it on. Still good, either, because it's not, when you do that, right?
So in the mornings, we can get the side and the front done, and in the afternoons, they can work on the north side.
Right.
You okay with that?
Yeah, and then after that, just do whatever you want, but I just got the idea, I was thinking the front ought to have two coats on as soon as possible because of the sign.
Okay.
Now, are you having the bricks repointed?
Yeah. We have to, uh, clean them out, and, uh, if there's not a lot of damage, it's just a, it's a repointing in like a caulking gun type thing, but if it's a lot of damage, we have to mix mortar and put it back in there.
Right, right.
So, that's where we're at, and we'll look at that tomorrow and see.
Yeah, we've also got, um, they did a prototype sign pole for the, um, the new recreation exercise equipment we installed last summer, and they have a little weatherproof sign that says how to use each one of them. I don't know, it's maybe about eight by 10 or so, and they needed a, a post to put it on, so the crew designed, uh, Heath Carden made a pole, a steel pole, and it's at an angle at the top, and, um, painted it silver, and they installed one, and I called up, um, Mrs. Laterno this afternoon and asked her to come over and look at it and see if it's the right height, and if she wants it a different color, not before we build the other four of them. Because, you know, once we get the go adds, and they'll just build them all and be done.
Right, yeah.
But we wanted, no sense of building them all, and they have to adjust them after they've been built, so that's where we stand on that. Um, other than that, I think everything's going pretty well. They've been getting a lot of work done.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, anybody else, okay, anyone from the public wishing to address the board may do so at this time? Well? All right, if not, we have no executive session, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move on, motion? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.